All right. So this is the regularly scheduled Town of Nantucket zoning board and field meeting, November 10th, isn't it, 2016? So we are going to, well, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written and then amended et cetera? Somebody?
I'll make that question.
Susan makes a motion. Michael seconds. It all is in, any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. How about approval of the minutes for October 13th, 2016? I read them. They looked okay to make.
I didn't read them.
Didn't read them?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Michael makes a motion to approve as written. Anybody want to?
I'll second.
Susan seconds it. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. We're gonna skip over the first old business so that we can get rid of a continuance. Thirty-six, sixteen, Lauren H. Kroll and Norma J. Goldman, 24 Coffin Street, for the applicant.
Hello, Mr. -- hi, Mr. Chairman. Brian Swain, attorney for the applicant. I'd like to request a continuance until the December meeting.
Works for me. So we're continuing without opening. So, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yep. All right. So do we have to vote on that thing? Probably, so. Somebody make a motion to continue this till the December, what's the December date?
December, uh, oh.
It's in there.
Is it the 12th? No. No. Four. 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 Eight. It's the eighth. It's the eighth.
December eighth.
Yeah.
Two thousand and sixteen. Okay. That motion's been made. Who made that motion? I don't even remember. Susan? Michael?
Oh, I did. I had Michael did.
Michael did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Susan will second it. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So thirty-two, sixteen, Alan Shook, trustee of the NF Shook Qualified Personal Residence Trust, forty-five Goodnet Road, for the applicant.
Yes, for the applicant, Sarah Alger. As you may recall, we were here last month asking for a special permit to raise up a pre-existing non-conforming beach cabana by three feet to get it out of the floodplain and to add a set of access stairs made necessary by the raise-up. The property is non-conforming. The building is non-conforming as to setbacks. It's like 2.7 feet on the east and it's closer than the required 20 feet on the south to the pond. This is one of those funny situations where the property is in a split zone and this particular structure is in the LUG III zone. The structure was renovated pursuant to a special permit previously granted by this board. The HTC has granted permission for the project and a copy of that certificate of appropriateness is in your file. Since being here last month, the Conservation Commission has also issued its order of conditions allowing the project and that is also in your file. There was some concern, I think, raised at the last hearing about the ejector pump. We've had extensive conversations with FR Mahoney. They say that we have the state-of-the-art pump. We're going to be adding and have permission from the Conservation Commission to add a monitoring system so that we'll get an alarm or notification if there's any infiltration. It is currently monitored at least every other year and often every year. The pump gets very little use because the building itself is seasonal, so in the fall it's, the whole, the whole thing is drained and shut down. So throughout the winter, which is really when it's most at risk of infiltration, it's not even operating. And then we fire it back up in the spring. So it gets about very light seasonal four-month use. And I think with that, unless you have any other questions, Ron Winters is here. He's going to be doing the construction and our project surveyor, Bob Emack, is also here.
Thank you. I have a question for Bob. Bob, I don't remember, you're going up three feet. Is that, um, do you have to go up to three feet?
Here's, under the new code, the ninth edition of the building code, which comes into effect in 2017, we would have to go up three feet because that will require us to be two feet above flood elevation. Currently, we have to be one foot. We're at elevation nine.
All right. So you've built in the 2017?
Yeah, we did.
Code? Okay. Maybe on the board have any questions or, I mean, it was primarily the Concom that we had asked to hear from?
Mm-hmm.
And they gave you the blessing on all fronts?
All fronts.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience who want to talk about this? No? Okay. So, it's a pleasure of the board. Any conditions anybody would want to impose? Can't think of any. When would the work be done? Not that we're ever restricted out there. Just curious.
We're gonna, we won't be doing it in the summer. We'd like to get it done as soon as possible. I think Tuscana said they couldn't get us on their schedule until January.
They're telling us that first or second of January is when they have it available open and that's on schedule. Two months ago, but we still have to get permits on this one. So, permanent.
So, we're almost at the, we'll be at the end of our Concom appeal period in the next couple of weeks. We'll have the 20-day appeal period from this decision and then we'll be in a position to file for the permit. And I think permits are taking a good 30 days, if not over the holidays, slightly longer than that.
If you'd like to do it at that time, provided that orders have increased a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe.
The Concom did put a condition on us that says we can't do the work if the water is within 10 feet of the structure. So we have, we have to do the work at a time when the water has receded. It's not current, we're currently in good shape.
Okay. All right. Anybody wanna talk about this anymore? Or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve it as applied for.
Okay. So Michael makes a motion to approve, grant the relief as requested. No specific conditions applied there, right? Does somebody want to?
I'll second that.
All right.
I would assume that the, the decision would have something in it about the condition that they agreed to on monitoring the system.
Works for me.
Yeah, that's fine.
So monitoring the system.
And I, there should be also, I think, a condition that will build in accordance with our HTC approval and our Concom.
Yeah, I was gonna say HTC and Concom and all that other stuff. Okay?
I'm with me.
All right. So that motion's been made and seconded. Okay? Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, so who's voting? Let's go Susan. Lisa's not, so Jim's not.
You don't have to.
No.
So Mark, you are voting.
Well, I think I'm on the signature on this.
Well, then Sarah's lucky. Maybe you'll sign it after not reading it. So anyway, so the five of us except Lisa and not Jim, okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we're gonna let Lisa open her packet for a moment.
Let me on now, I can't.
Zero one four dash nine nine and zero two one dash two two, Dennis E. Dias and Susan Gale, Suzanne Gale, two trip drive for the applicant.
Linda Williams and Dennis Dias, one of the principals. At the last town meeting, special town meeting, they changed the zoning all the way down from two acres to one acre, making the previous decisions moot. And we have to officially come in and ask for a rescission, which has to be filed at the registry and the town clerk so they know that they're no longer in effect. And it's complying to the LUG I zoning district where previously it was not to the LUG II.
Okay. Does anybody have any question about this, this one? As Linda said, it was rezoned.
Non-conforming.
So everything is, everything's conforming dimensionally, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Correct?
Yep. The reason why it was here back in the 90s and early 2000s is because they, whole family owned all trip drive and his grandmother had given him this piece and this piece was a sub-minimum lot compared to the other two acres that are on Dennis, that on trip drive. And it had been held in common ownership. And so it had technically had merged back with the lot that was behind it. And in order to make it a freestanding lot, they had to come in and get the variances from the ZBA so it could be transferred out of common ownership legally.
Just out of curiosity, why do you have to rescind these, so to speak, or get rid of these?
We've done them occasionally when zoning has made something conforming over the last 30 or 40 years. The problem is, is that both of these decisions are on record at the registry and thus still enforced, whether it's conforming or not. So you have to officially rescind them. So there's a superseding document that says they're no longer in effect. It's just a cleaner way of doing it rather than letting them hang out there. I know Steve probably has something to say about that, but.
Rescinded previous decisions were no longer applicable?
And none of the, the old conditions would necessarily?
Not relevant anymore.
Not relevant anymore. All right. Well, I don't have an issue with that.
Make a motion to approve the request?
Yep, if you'd like.
Make the motion.
Okay. So you're making a motion to grant?
To just rescind the?
Vacate, whatever you want to call it, the previous decisions that are listed.
Um, based on the testimony, that the project is now fully compliant with these other.
Yeah, relief is not necessary.
Doesn't it have to go up to the State House to get blessed? No? That doesn't?
It does, but zoning takes effect the minute it's put in for the advertisement. I don't know, Steve, was that July? The minute it went into advertising, zoning, an only zoning, takes effect the minute it goes in the newspaper and really takes, really buttressed by the fact that it was approved at town meeting. We wait for it. Clearly, we're gonna wait and see what the AG does, but it is, right now, he can take advantage of the one-acre zoning. He's not doing anything right now, anyway. He's just trying to get these off.
And the conditions, the conditions of the planning board approval will still stand?
These are ZBA approvals, these two previous decisions. The driveway off of trip drive in a single-family dwelling, those go away when the decisions are rescinded. That's no longer necessary.
Okay. It says the planning, it says the planning board approved modification based on those conditions.
We approved the subdivision. But the ZBA is the one that issued the two decisions, not the planning board. The planning board did issue the subdivision modification when they split the lot out.
Right. But it says, based upon these conditions, that, um.
Okay, do you want?
At the time, yes.
I'm on page 21. So I just want to make, like, why, even though it's, even though the lot conforms now, do we still, does it still need to be, these restrictions to a single-family dwelling or vehicular access to the property restricted to trip drive and no curb cuts allowed on South Shore Road?
We'll go back and deal with the planning board separately, but they're not gonna do anything until it's rescinded here.
Well, that's basically the same question I had, Susan. I mean, there are some restrictions that were put on. Do we feel that they need to stay?
Were they put on because the project wasn't compliant?
Yes.
So if they're compliant now, why would they need to stay?
I'm not saying they would. There was just a point of discussion, so I understand it.
Yes. The planning board.
Was after this.
Well, it can't be after the decision because it says they approved the mod, they are, they, it's in the past tense, they approved the modification, which you're saying you guys, the planning board, did based on those conditions.
Right. Because the ZBA was first. And then we went to the planning board to get the subdivision blessed with that lot being pulled out of the rest of the street.
Well, how could the planning board be first if this is the decision by the ZBA?
No, I said the planning board was after the decision of the ZBA. And we'll have to deal with the planning board.
That's what I meant, sorry, I said it wrong.
Yeah.
How could the planning board be after the decision by the ZBA if this says the planning board, in past tense, approved the modification based on the following conditions? So they, it sounds like they had already, they went first.
Steve?
What's the question?
Who knew? We're talking 1999. All I know is it required both boards to do action.
I just want to make sure that we don't wipe something out that, like.
No, we didn't, the planning board doesn't care. The issue is, is that the ZBA.
Susan's making the point.
We're going to go back to the planning board and ask Leslie to vacate that also. But that had to happen here first because that's the order it took place in. And unless you release it and say, "We don't need this anymore," they're not gonna say, "We don't need it anymore."
But it's all subject to approval by the state.
By the Attorney General. So if he doesn't approve it, which we can't imagine, he's not gonna approve it.
Yeah, so that should be in the decision.
Well, you can't defer action.
Why, why would?
Well, then why are you here and why don't you wait until they turn a general case?
Yeah, why wouldn't you want to wait?
Because he's entitled to be able to come in here now. He's entitled to come in now.
But if we can't defer action, then, I mean, I get it, yeah, it looks back to the first publication.
It's legal now for you to waive them now because it's taking, zoning takes place the minute it goes in the newspaper, I don't know how many weeks before October.
That's not what we're asking.
But if we, if we, if we, if we get rid of it now and then the AG says?
overturns it, then the decision stands still because he's still.
Right, but like, then why, then why, why waste his time and money?
Well, they wouldn't stand at that point. That'd be the point. They'd be vacated, they'd be rescinded. They wouldn't stand, they wouldn't automatically.
They would only be vacated if the Attorney General approves.
You got some help here? Chasing their tails.
Right. So they may basically not man it all. Okay, so that would be the condition.
Passage of the Attorney General. You can make a decision based on passage of Attorney General. That's all we're asking for, so we don't have to keep coming back.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah. It's like the issuance of a CO. I mean, unless it meets all the criteria, it's not happening.
Okay. So that would be the condition. Are you comfortable with that, Susan?
Um, I think so. I think so.
I mean, do you want to go so far as to say, "And it's also conditional on the planning board"?
You can't. That's a referred action and that's not legal. You can hold it for approval from the Attorney General on the article. And we'll have to deal with the planning board because they'll have to modify it also.
So the planning board went first?
Not as far as I remember, but that was 17 years ago, so I don't know.
Well, no, they did. This says, "Applicant Sutton received a modification of said covenant, which was granted on February 10th, 1999, by the planning board." This decision by us was April, in April.
What page is that?
Twenty-two. So twenty says, I mean, sorry, twenty?
I haven't seen the document that you're talking about, so I don't know where it came from.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, the decision.
It's the old decision from 1999.
From which one, 99?
Yeah.
What paragraph?
Yeah, on page 20, Susan, you were.
I don't have your numbers.
It's the first page, the first page of the application, paragraph three, like, the last sentence at the bottom.
I've got this one.
I, I'm not trying to make a fight, I just want to make sure we do it right. Because I'm not against it at all, I just want to make sure we do it procedurally right.
We'll go back and deal with the planning board, but you can't defer action to the planning board. Clearly, he won't get, he won't be able to register it without dealing with the planning board. All we're asking is for you to rescind the decisions and make it conditional upon passage from the Attorney General.
Well, if you, if you put this, if you registered it, put it on a deed, and it says "Subject to approval by the AG" and the AG doesn't approve it, then?
Dead.
You're back to where you started.
That's right. Yeah. Simple.
I think what Susan is saying is arguably, if you went to the planning board first before and this decision in 99 is based on it, it clearly states that, you know, there was a modification put in place by the planning board, therefore, this decision was partially based on that. Arguably, you should be there first, not here first.
Theirs was a subdivision modification, which has nothing to do with this board. This had to go for a validation of the lot because it had been held in common ownership with the abutting lot. That's the only reason it was here.
Right. So this went to the planning board because?
They can't do anything about the variance.
The planning board's decision eliminated the condition that prohibited any improvements on the locusts. And then, and then the variance relief was still necessary from, from this board?
Yes.
To enable them to build a dwelling. But the planning board put these, said they would allow it with these conditions.
Right. So we'll have to deal with them.
Et cetera, et cetera.
But we're here for you because the variance has to be, both of them have to be vacated.
So if we rescind this, then, then the, the planning board decision still stands, which requires variance relief for any improvements and you're going to then get the planning board modification vacated as well?
Yeah.
So if you can't do that?
Well, they'll have to modify the subdivision again.
Right, right. But if you couldn't do that, then you'd have to come back to us again because the, the conditions would stand that you needed, you couldn't, you would be, you would need a variance.
Well, they're gonna be modifying the thing for the whole street because everybody on the street's gonna be subdividing. We already know that two or three of them are subdividing into one-acre lots, so the whole, the whole subdivision's coming back at some point.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we'll have a bunch of people.
So they still have to deal with that.
This is a separate lot by virtue of the zoning board decision?
Yes.
No, by virtue of the planning board and the zoning.
No, because, and the zoning.
So is there a lot, so you're going back to the planning board and get a subdivision to base it?
No, it's already been subdivided. We're going back to the planning board to take the conditions off of it. But everybody on the street's gonna be subdividing down into one-acre lots, so the whole thing's gonna be going back to the planning board at some point.
But this lot was subdivided, subdivided there?
Initially, when the subdivision was done, there was, this is an unbuildable lot.
It merged before.
Yeah.
Held in common ownership with the abutting property to the west.
Right.
That's why they went back to the planning board to get it, so it was a buildable lot. And then they had to come in here to get a variance to have it separately buildable and marketable from the abutting lot. So it, both lot, both had to get involved. But we're just asking you to rescind the variances as not necessary because they aren't, no matter what the planning board does. And then we have to go back to the planning board to get the prohibitions off.
And you just want to clean this up?
Yeah. It's gotta have a paper trail somewhere. Because the planning board could decide not to take their conditions off, but still the variances have to come off, no matter what the planning board does.
So is the condition about the restricted to one single-family dwelling and the vehicular access to the property would be restricted to trip road, is that on the planning board decision?
I have to look at that. I believe it was.
It says, "The planning board approved the modification based upon the following conditions: variance relief would need, would need to be received from the Board of Fields, blah, blah, blah."
Yeah.
Then it would be restricted to one single-family dwelling and vehicular access would be restricted to trip drive. So those are planning board.
Okay. Then, then, as long as those conditions?
They're still hanging over there.
I don't care about the single-family dwelling, I was more concerned about the curb cut.
He's not planning on changing his curb cut.
Wouldn't you really want to have those planning board, like, the various relief?
You don't need the variance relief anymore. It's now one-acre zoning.
No, I'm saying, I'm not saying you need it, but the planning board says, the planning board decision says you do need it.
At the time, they did need it. That's why you have to go back and clean up the planning board decision as well.
I understand that.
Okay.
Right, but Linda, even if?
And all I'm saying is, wouldn't you want to get that out of the way before this?
And if this was an unbuildable lot beforehand, because it had merged, it would still be, wouldn't it still be, if you get rid of the decision, wouldn't, like, wouldn't it merge back?
No. It's one-acre zoning now. It doesn't have to merge back. The one behind it was a two-acre lot. This one was a one-acre lot.
So it was non-conforming and that's why.
And it was vacant, which automatically made it merge, even, no matter she transferred the property into Dennis's name, it still was held in common ownership after a certain date.
And it was vacant.
And there was nothing you could do about that. You had to actually come in and validate it. And back in the 90s and early 2000s, we were validating dozens of these lots that had been sold out of common ownership, but they had been held in common ownership after a certain date and one was vacant and one had a house or they were both vacant. We were validating lots right and left by variance because of this chain of title.
So can we make the decision, or we can't make it based on the planning board approval, but obviously if the planning board doesn't approve?
The planning, the planning board's not involved in your decision at all.
No, I know, I'm just thinking procedurally because the planning board requires a variance. You're asking us to vacate the variance, but then if the planning board doesn't, that, that was a condition of a planning board decision, so then if the planning board doesn't rescind their decision, for whatever reason, I have no idea what their reasoning might be.
Well, then they're still stuck over at the planning board. But the planning board will have to modify the language. They have no choice because it's a legal lot. The planning board would have to take the variance off because it is not necessary. And the planning board supported the change in zoning.
So I think I'd feel more comfortable than if you had gone to the planning board first and said, "It's a legal lot, they can't do this, it's gone, so this variance now is no longer."
Well, Leslie didn't think it was necessary to do that.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I agree with Susan, it just seems you're out, you're taking it in the wrong order.
Just to make it easier for you, I mean.
It's not making it easier for him.
Well, it's not making it any harder.
Because he can get in, he can get into the planning board meeting on Monday. I just have to let Catherine know right now that we have done that here.
Why, why is this material getting on the planning board agenda?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't require a public hearing, from what I gathered. But I have to talk to Leslie about that. But they didn't seem to be concerned about this at all.
Yeah, like, they're separate.
What we do here is, is important to whether or not you get on the agenda.
Because they're not gonna release, they're not gonna do anything until you guys release the variance. The variance is the problem, not the subdivision, not the reallocation of the lots in the subdivision. The variance is what's not necessary at all with the passage of that.
I don't disagree with you, I don't think anybody does, but it says that the planning board put on the condition about the variance relief being necessary.
So I think they would need to release the condition first.
So you would want them to rescind that first, then you come in.
It doesn't matter which direction you go first. They both have to take place. If you rescind the variance, because under your sole jurisdiction of this board, forget what the planning board did. It's not within your jurisdiction, being a planning board member.
It's not what we're talking about, that this decision is clearly called out of the planning board relationship.
Who comes first or second doesn't matter in this instance. You have to rescind the variance under your sole jurisdiction, that it is no longer necessary because of the change in zoning. What the planning board does is beyond your control.
Linda, we know that, and no one's fighting with you. We're just trying to, I just wanna figure out procedurally why this makes, like, why this makes sense. I don't disagree, and I totally think that should be released and all of that. I just, I don't think it's...
Wouldn't it make sense just to go to the next planning board meeting and then come back to...
They're off two or three months.
Why do you need us so quickly? You're waiting for the A.G. anyway.
Yeah, you have to wait for the A.G., and you're not doing anything you said, so...
Do you have a comment?
Why does it matter?
I don't know if you would need this for...
Well, we've had to do it before because there's a problem with the registry and things on record without being rescinded. So the H, the ZBA, and the ZBA for the last, since I was involved in nineteen eighty-three forward, has required that there be some sort of rescission at the registry, because it's cleaner, because right now, it's still on the books with conditions.
ZBA hasn't required any of that. It's just, I don't know why you make this stuff up, but...
Because I was on for twenty-five years, that's why.
I don't think...
And I did it.
What's that?
I did it several times.
You've done something someday, somewhere. I'm not denying...
We don't usually present with this kind of issue. Purse off.
Well, can I just get back to, why can't we just go through, if the issue bore the planning board, and you can get on the agenda Monday, why don't you do that and then go back? If you have to wait for the A.G. anyway, what's the timing with going in that order? If it's a concern to...
Leslie and Andrew didn't seem to think that this was a problem. They said, "Bring it on into the, bring it into the ZBA, get rid of it."
I'm glad that Leslie didn't think we do at this point. And I don't think arguing about it ad nauseam is gonna change something.
So what's the...
Is there some reason?
I just feel more comfortable if the planning board removed the conditions that were required for us to put in this...
Well, they're not gonna remove the conditions without you guys removing the variance. They have to modify the subdivision.
No, no, no. But because they mentioned something about a variance in the decision...
Us having, us doing a vari, us, the subdivision modification was conditioned upon the zoning board granting a variance. If the variance is no longer needed, and the modification is no longer needed, then once you get rid of the modification, and you come back to us and say, "The planning board got rid of this," then it makes it so easy for us to say, "Great. Goodbye, variance." But right now, there's still a planning board decision that stands that says that this is required.
Totally outside of the ZBA.
It would seem to me that your client, your client wouldn't want us to vacate the variance, because there's still a document out there saying that he's in need of one.
Yeah. So then for that, for that little time, you'd be...
So why would he want to get rid of that relief ahead of time?
Back to the original decision, the only paragraphs you look at are the granting paragraph and the final paragraph with conditions. It doesn't mention anything about being conditioned upon action by the planning board. It was simply, I did the decision. I know what it says. It's simply illustrative of the process that got it to the ZBA, so you understand how it got to the ZBA. It is not a condition of relief. It is not dispository of the findings. That's the difference. That's why what the planning board does is what the planning board does. We've already supported the change in the zoning, knowing that this was happening. So I've got to go back to your jurisdiction issues, which are the last couple of paragraphs here, and your granting paragraph, which does not condition it on planning board relief. You took it on yourselves. Whatever the planning board does, they do, even back in, back in the day.
I don't agree with you there that they're not intertwined.
I also think, I also think, Linda...
Legally, they're not.
I don't agree with that.
It would be much more helpful if you argued this or presented it as a representative, representing your client, not as a planning board member.
I'm not, I wasn't on the planning board back then.
Well, you keep saying, "We do this, we do that. This is what we do. We did this," like...
I'm telling you how the process works at the planning board. That's it. I'm not here as a planning board member. I'm telling you how it normally works even today.
Okay. But it sounds like you're telling us how to do our job, which is a little...
No, I'm just saying, I've got a jurisdictional problem here.
And I don't think anyone on the board, I mean, I know I'm doing a lot of the talking, but I don't think anyone has a problem with this. We just wanna make sure that it's done in the right timeframe. I would feel terribly if we granted variance relief, the planning board didn't grant the modification, or it somehow got hung up, and then the A.G. didn't allow this, and then your guy is stuck with no variance relief for a decision that's still on, even though he has a legal lot. Like, a legal lot's all the time, get variance relief for things. I just, I'd rather do it in a succinct matter, so he's not left holding the bag at some point if something happens that we all think isn't gonna happen, but you know, things happen.
Except that, the lot is now considered a legal lot, with or without a variance.
But legal lots still have, still have conditions on them. Just 'cause it's legal doesn't mean he can do whatever he...
Which, for the moment, is not a big problem for them.
At the moment, exactly. You're making my point for me. At the moment, it's not a problem. But what if it becomes a problem? I just, I'd rather have the planning board go first. But I'm just one person, so...
Okay. Just so you know, there's no prescribed order.
I think there's a reason we keep sitting to feel the same way.
Right.
So why don't we continue this until...
I also don't wanna, like, usurp the planning board. I'd rather have them make...
You're not, you can't usurp the planning board on a variance.
And I think it's five minutes.
I mean, I mean courtesy-wise, like, this is a condition they put on a decision for...
You got something?
Well, I don't know that it's gonna help today, but if she can get on the agenda under other business or office or something, which meets on Monday, they'll make a recommendation. That recommendation is frankly likely, given that they did underwrite the Warren article to change the zoning, is frankly likely to be positive, to be positively needed. So if she comes back in December, I know that's delaying things a month, but if you come back, she tells her recommendation rather than a full modification, would that assuage this board?
If you built into, as we typically do, if you're not willing to approve it, we're...
That's what we're talking about.
That's what I'm suggesting. Just to wait a month. If you're waiting for the A.G. anyway, what difference does it make?
No, he wouldn't require that anyway. All right. So you want him to come back. When did you figure out the meeting was?
This is my, you know, I want to support, just to think how it works.
Was it the eighth?
Rather than having to go through the hearing process, if that becomes necessary for the implementation, so...
Yeah. We'll go over and see Leslie now.
Your meeting is the eighth.
Our meeting, we can't get on Monday. I think we have a special meeting for, whatchamacallit, Richmond.
So at any rate, the planning board recommendation can be built in.
Okay.
All right. So is that a motion to continue to the December meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. So, did someone second that?
I'll second it.
Susan's seconded. Any further discussion? No? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thirty-seven sixteen C.H.C. Development LLC.
Did you approve it until twenty-four sixteen?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did it both.
Were you noticing that, given that this did so many months, and there also may be some changes to the way it needs to be noticed pending H.D.C.?
No, we didn't do that. I'm sorry, we did not.
Continue.
We did the other one.
We continue thirty-six sixteen.
No, we'll do twenty-four sixteen. Six Lily Street LLC and Wisconsin Partners LLC, six and eight Lily Street. Are we all comfortable continuing that to January twelfth?
I'm, typo there, it should say seventeen. Sorry, January twelfth, twenty-seventeen.
Twenty-seventh.
Let's surge, I can play it back there.
All right. Are we good for that?
Yes.
All right. Somebody make that motion, please.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Susan make the motion. Somebody, you wanna second that? Jim?
Yeah, we'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, okay. So back to thirty-seven sixteen C.H.C. Development LLC, seven Primrose Lane.
Seven Primrose.
For the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Stephen Cohen for the applicant. I think what we have is hopefully a relatively simple application in front of you, which I always like to say because it makes you smile, puts you in such a good mood, although it's rarely true. The project at seven Primrose is a new development on a lot that was vacant. It was applied for with a zoning plan that showed a portion of the building as having, a portion of the proposed structure is, one of the buildings is essentially a cabana with two enclosed areas and a relatively large unenclosed area with a roof overhang that was originally identified as not composing ground cover. And the building permits were issued that way. And then when we went to start getting C.O.s, the building commissioner said, "Oh, no, that should count as ground cover, and therefore, you're overground cover, and therefore, your building permit is revoked until you come into compliance." The problem that we have here is that his definition seems to be arbitrary and inconsistent with other projects that have been approved, and also inconsistent with the zoning bylaw and other materials. And I don't know, have you had a chance to review the denial order and look at the pictures of the building? So, you know, it's essentially a changing room and a bathroom, right?
That's right.
Yeah. That are each, you know, enough room for you to change your mind in. And a space in between that has a roof overhang that's about twelve or fourteen feet long that you put a chair in and get out of the shade, get into the shade, get out of the sun. The position that Mr. Butler took in his denial was that the zoning code exempts breezeways, but this isn't a breezeway because there's no doors between the connection, which I don't know that there has to be, but sort of aside from that, he said that it can't be a porch, because a porch is like the front entry porch, or a rear entry, or a rear porch on a building, and it takes, I think, a very narrow definition of porch. There is no definition of porch in the building code or the zoning code. And I forgot to submit it, but I'm just gonna read to you, "Building with Nantucket in mind's definition of porch," since it's the one that he cited to, and it's, porch is, in early buildings, the internal entry with a staircase, later, a Nantucket term for the service l. In recent times, a structure attached to a building to shelter an entrance or to serve as a semi-enclosed space, usually roofed and generally open-sided. And I think what we have here is very clearly a building with a sheltered, a semi-enclosed space that's roofed and generally open-sided. It's a, a porch is an area in which you sit to get out of the sun a little bit. You know, it doesn't, this, this building has no doors, and no windows, and no enclosures on nearly the entire structure, and is really just a roof overhang, if anything. And I'm happy to...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Since we don't have copies of the building permits, were they, was it issued as one building?
It was, right?
Correct.
It was. Okay. So one of these is not a zoning shed.
Correct.
Do you have copies of the building?
No, we don't, I don't think.
There is a separate building.
Oh, no, I meant the drawings and drawings.
There is a separate zoning shed on the lot.
We got no drawings that go with the application. So it's sort of hard to know what the application, you know, is attached to, just for future reference.
Well, there are some, yeah.
Not in the packet that I have.
The site, I've submitted, are you looking for drawings of the building?
There's drawings. I was wondering about the permit.
In the staff report, Lisa, at the end.
Oh, sorry.
The look at page eighteen...
No, but I did, but Lisa's correct. We have these applications, but there's no, there are no plans attached to the application. So we don't know what these go with.
Okay. Chip Webster, on behalf of the applicant, maybe I can answer some of those questions. I do have some plans which I can bring. And in answer to Lisa's question, none of this is intended to fall under the exempt shed. So both enclosed areas are, have always been or intended to count as ground coverage.
But there's, there's separate applications.
Not for these little buildings.
It's a hundred and ninety-two square feet.
Oh, total. I see. And the cycle of...
The application showed the building as one structure with a portion of it not counting as ground cover.
But it always had a common roof.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The application showed it as a common roof, but with the roof not counting. And that was accepted, and then later, the same, the same building was rejected.
Okay. Well, for future reference, when we get a building permit application, whoever gave this to us...
You would like to see the plan.
That goes with us. It's not that I don't believe you, but I...
It makes it easier for us to look at it.
Okay. I will never forget that, Mr....
I'm naturally disbelieving of people.
I have three, four copies, if you'd like me to...
No, we have the drawings.
Are those the ones that are stamped from the application?
No.
I know what the building looks like, Chip. I'm just saying, you know, why would Steve, why has Steve backtracked? So, I mean, he approved, his office approved this building as, I mean, as it looks now?
Yes.
Correct. As a hundred and ninety-two square feet.
Correct.
Now... And then after it was constructed and we went for the C.O., he changed his mind.
There seemed to be some change in the definition of the building as some of these things marched through, from the shed to a pool cabana and things like that. So the nomenclature for the building kept gelling into something different. And I think that's what he's hanging his head out, and I don't know why it would make a difference personally.
But his office issued the permit.
That's right. And Mark is correct, that the way it was described was changed, but the building itself was not actually changed. And when he went and looked at it again, for some reason, that even though it was the same design, suddenly it was considered different.
I think the danger of this, and it's not that I have an issue with this particular building, is that I think what's happening is people are connecting these buildings, and then, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen here, but then lo and behold, that a porch gets windows in it, and all of a sudden, it's an enclosed space.
Right.
And it becomes much more ground covered. So I have a hard time sort of count going against Steve's thought process, because he's trying to set a precedent that we're not gonna, we're not gonna do this anymore. And I would agree with him that this is not a breezeway.
Right.
It is one structure.
The kitchen, which I hadn't noticed before, for lack of a better word, is in the porch space. That's probably where Steve has a problem with this application. When you first applied as storage sheds, I'm sure, I'm guessing, because it's not as part of our application material, they were probably just two rectangular sheds.
So you could easily put a glass wall in the back, put some French doors in the front, and turn it into a dining porch.
I guess the concern that I have, Lisa, is that you're suggesting that a future unpermitted act that would be a violation should be a reason to deny something that's...
I didn't say that I was gonna deny. I'm just saying, I understand Steve's point, because I think that this is becoming a big way that people are, you know, getting around the ground coverage and creating these cabanas that are much, become much more usable.
So I, I, I agree with you, that there is, people are looking both to push the envelope on what they can do within the bounds, and people, some people abuse it later. They'll get their C.O., and then they'll change it. I mean, there's a long history of people having an unenclosed porch, and then later, they enclose it in without a permit, and then it's a zoning problem. And, you know, and that's a real concern. But I think what's important here is only to look at what Steve is distinguishing, why this can't be a porch. And I think he's essentially saying that a porch can only be on a dwelling and can't be on an accessory structure. And I just don't know that that's true.
Well, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. But I do sort of feel like, in a way, that this is not a porch. This is one structure. This is one structure that happens to have a void in the middle.
Right. Well, I think that the...
It doesn't meet my definition of what a porch is.
The enclosed pieces are clearly ground cover. And the overhang in between them is just that. It's either just an overhang, which generally doesn't count against ground cover, and/or porch. I mean, if you had a building and then a long thing protruding off it, that wouldn't count as ground cover.
Yes, clearly a porch.
So the fact that it connects...
Another structure.
To another structure, I don't think creates, causes it to be ground cover.
I don't know.
But what makes it not a breezeway?
I mean, to me, breezeways are never, are never a continuation of the roof line. They're using narrower, they become a passageway to link to structures.
Yeah. Steve, yeah, Steve suggested was a breezeway should have doors. I don't know.
I don't consider this a breezeway.
No, no, no. Steve's issue with it not being a breezeway, I thought, was much more that a breezeway is to connect two structures, I mean, two dwellings.
Or a garage.
Or a garage, yeah. Or just any two buildings.
It's a link. It's not a huge roof. I don't know. I read this as one building. I don't read it as two buildings that are connected by a breezeway.
Well, you're...
There's no question about that.
And I think we're, we're saying it's one building, and that part of it's ground coverage and part of it isn't. And that the part that's ground coverage is the enclosed space, and the part that's not ground coverage is the open space that meets the definition of, that's a building with Nantucket in mind, in the absence of a definition in the zoning.
Okay. If you, if you just have an overhang coming off a building, that does not count as ground cover.
I understand, but this isn't an overhang coming off a building. This is a roof that is connecting two structures and making one building. It's not an overhang. There's no way that you would ever compare an overhang to what you've built here.
I mean, you arguably could cut the roof to a, let's just be the small, two-inch...
Right.
Right.
And then they're not attached anymore. Then it would...
Right.
But then it wouldn't be a common roof.
Then, then the permit would be invalid, because it's now two structures.
Well, you can have the structures. I don't think the, well, yeah, I mean, I...
No, you don't have to cut one roof off. If they weren't connected on both sides, it could be a porch to the changing room, and then have the mechanical shed separated.
Yeah. From a ground cover perspective, if you did it your way, then it wouldn't count, right?
Yes.
If you cut it half inch, which...
Hey, you just wanna saw it on the middle. Right. Well, I, I think the concern I have is that there are a number of pool cabanas and similar type accessory structures that have, or garages, or studios, or whatever, that have been built with pools, and then have an overhang to create shade. The fact...
Absolutely.
And that is generally not considered to be ground cover, and was approved, in this case, to be not ground cover. I just don't understand why sort of the shape of this one changes it. There's no doors, there's no walls, there's no windows. It's just an overhang.
And the plan did not change from the day it was approved by the H.D.C., the day it went through zoning review, the day it went through the Board of Health review, the day it was issued a permit.
That's right.
Nothing changed, except maybe how it was named in the ensuing paperwork.
The kitchenette was always on the, was on, the kitchenette was on the...
I am ninety-nine percent sure.
Why don't we continue this and maybe we'll get to a hundred percent?
Yeah, okay.
And so we understand maybe a little bit better as to... I wouldn't mind, quite frankly, having Steve.
Well, Steve would come and say something.
There to explain his position.
He's out of town. On vacation.
And Marcus had a complex.
I mean, I think it'd be nice to see the generation of the building permits and the drawings that went alongside, because I'd like to understand Steve's problem with it.
I'd like to see the site stamped copy that's issued with the permit.
Yeah.
And if it matches these drawings, they issued the permit and...
Okay. So I can elaborate an little bit more. We can certainly get that, all that information. The plans have never changed. And as I said, when ninety-nine, ninety, you know, I'm certain that that kitchen was always there, and it was always a changing room one side, a chemical one side. I believe that what happened was, at the Building Department, when the initial permit was issued under these plans, it was issued as a shed, even though it was not applied for as a shed.
The application said storage shed.
And that didn't, and that didn't...
It said storage shed.
The application was not for a shed.
It was. I have it right here. It said storage, one ninety-two square foot storage shed. And then it got amended to be a pool cabana.
Okay.
So it wasn't.
But there was a bathroom in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We're not asking about the bathroom. We're asking whether or not the kitchen was there as part of the porch area.
I thought they didn't issue zoning permits when you have plumbing in them.
Right, right. It shouldn't have been.
Should never have been issued as a zoning permit.
It should not have been issued as a zoning permit initially.
Absolutely not.
And then, and that didn't, that wasn't...
That didn't impact your ground cover numbers. That was issued wrong, incorrectly.
Correct, correct.
Absolutely.
Well, then, oh, there was not, I don't, was there a zoning shed permit in here?
No, it wasn't. It was, it was not applied for that way. It was issued that way. It was, it was applied for as...
It was applied for as a storage building, not as a shed.
Yeah, not as a zoning shed.
It was issued as a shed.
But not as a zoning shed, it was just a shed.
No. Look, it's zoning permit.
They issued it incorrectly.
Interesting. Well, no, that, is that for this shed?
Yeah.
That's the other one.
Yeah. This was the way it was issued. It should never have been issued that way because they had plumbing in it.
And so when that was discovered, we came in to have it reissued as a storage building.
We don't have a copy of the amended...
They called for an inspection.
Right. I get it, I get it.
But we don't have a copy...
They messed it up.
Correct.
It's on them.
We don't have a copy of the amended permit.
Do you have a copy of the amended application?
Right. We don't have a copy of the amended...
No, they don't have one. There is no permit. That's why we're denying.
That's where it stopped.
That's where it stopped.
Wait. What do you mean?
So they ought to avoid this permit and issue you a proper building permit for, for the ground cover that you requested on the application that they approved, and take it on the notes, basically.
Why would you take this permit if it said zoning permit?
The, the builder picked it up and it wasn't...
Didn't think twice about it.
Yeah.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't notice the difference.
But when you went to amended with the second amendment...
Building versus zoning, it's a different word. I know.
You think the person who picked it up noticed it?
When you went to pick up the amendment, where is that permit? Usually they stamp the cards.
No, that was when we got the denial.
Huh?
That's when we got the denial.
Oh, I see. You think it was...
We never received the amended permit. That's why we're here, because...
Well, I think we need to get a duty here.
Andor, you need to show us the plans that you got a permit for.
Yep.
And what they've worked to now, that, that you then got denied, not only denied, but then you got your building permit revoked, right? Didn't he...
Got the zoning permit revoked.
So it turns out to be a zoning permit.
Well, yeah, because the zoning...
Because you already have another zoning permit, right?
No, there's always, there's no zoning shed in here.
But it has plumbing in it. It can't be a zoning shed.
But it's, it's more than two hundred square feet.
We've never asked for one, never had been one. You will.
So, I, I mean, I, I appreciate you wanting more information, but I think that, at the end of the day, this overhang is unenclosed space that, that is just creating shade. So it, I think it qualifies under the definition of, of a porch. That's all a porch is. So we could do this, you know, more thoroughly or less thoroughly, but I don't know that it...
We'd like to do it thoroughly.
I know.
We'd like to do it thoroughly.
So why don't we just, let's, unless you want to have a redux of the last application, let's not argue too long. I mean, I think all of us would like more information, so we understand, understand how Steve got to his decision. Because it's not just asking us whether it's a porch or not, it's, we're, we're here trying to, or you want us to overturn Steve?
I, I, I do, and I'm a little surprised that the Building Department didn't send anybody, but I, I get it.
Well, Steve is out of town, and Marcus has a conflict.
Right. Okay. It would be easier if they were here to...
Okay. Um, because it was, my understanding conversations with Steve, that if we got, you to say you interpreted as a porch, then he could issue the amendment. So, I understand.
I, you know, the other thing is, I, I guess, we, we had another one of these very similar out, out in the same area. And we went and inspected it, and it wasn't...
That wasn't similar. It had walls, and it had panels, doors.
I'm saying it was similar. I didn't say it was the same.
I, I...
So what I was going to get at is, you know, I wouldn't mind doing at least a draw. Can I go in and, and look at it?
Yeah. I, I, I would encourage a site inspection if you're going to do that, because this, I was, you probably remember counsel on that other one, and it was, it was entirely different in character, although legacy, you know, the legal, the legal arguments are the same, but that one, they essentially taken windows and doors, they wanted to say that it was a, you know, a gazebo.
That was the gazebo.
And it, but it, but that one had walls and, you know, substantially more to it. This is clearly just an overhang connecting two little boxes. There's no walls or windows or anything that have just been, no doors that have just been, I mean, I think...
There's not even foundation.
Frankly, I think, and you were the one who pointed out to me...
These two sheds were put together.
Yeah.
In that same area.
With a porch on one side of it, it would, it would be...
Or around the two side.
But I think porches are normally, you know, they're, they're, I don't know.
This is definitely a stretch.
Yeah. Is this, are we talking precedent setting here?
Well, I think it, it sends a message about how, yeah. Not necessarily for us. I think in general, it's, you know, how are, how do you create more of a building out of very little ground cover?
If the overhang was pointing forward and not connecting to one of the buildings, like, if we just squished these things together and pointed the overhang out to create the shaded area, no one would argue that that's not a porch.
I would not argue.
So I don't know why the shape of it is material.
Let's pick it up in December. I'd like, you know, again, I'm not saying that I haven't, you know, I'm not saying I'm ready to vote one way or the other, but I just don't want some smoking gun coming, coming later, because this isn't even what you applied for.
So you want to...
Originally, and got an approval for.
And I think it's important for, I mean, I think Steve should, should come in and talk about, first of all, say, yeah, we screwed up. It shouldn't have been a zoning shed permit. I don't know why. You know, I want him to be able to come in and defend his denial. I think that's what makes it fair.
You want to see the approved original permit with the, the plan that was attached to the permit, and you want to give Steve the opportunity?
Original permit, amended permit, application.
Yeah. And Steve?
The amended permit's the one that's sitting on his shelf. That hasn't been issued.
That's correct.
So we're not going to...
Yeah, no, the, the drawings.
Well, you'd still see what was...
I see the drawings, and we'll submit it for it.
Drawings for A and B.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure. That'll be my motion.
Did you say you wanted to inspect it, or you mean not?
Well, we can do it on our own, right?
You can do it on your own, so there's not one, two of you.
Is anyone at, at the project or house?
No, you could, you could go. You just drive right out and park and go look at it.
If you look at one of the documents here that was signed off by the Board of Health, this had to be done before the permit was even reviewed. And the plans are indicative of everything that he showed us with the kitchen, with the bathroom, everything he showed us, except different kind of the roof form.
But that could be the re, the non-issued one, Mark.
Well, this has to be stamped by the Board of Health prior to the permit.
No, no, but that could be that, that Steve has not issued this.
Was this the amended one?
Well, that's what we don't know. Four nine, let's see. What was the application date of the amended? I made a mistake.
Bottom line is, there had to be a septic review done by the Board of Health prior to the issuance of any building permit.
Okay. So this is for... This was issued on March twenty-four, twenty sixteen. The Board of Health stamped, or handwritten application is six twenty-nine.
Yeah. So that's, that was the amended.
So that would be your amendment component.
And that's the one that Steve is now questioning.
Okay. So Lisa made a motion to continue to simulate the...
For more information for the Building Department.
And, and hopefully, and an appearance by Steve.
Hopefully Steve, if he wants to...
Mr. Butler. No. Will someone second that, please? Michael seconds it. Uh, all, any further discussion? No. Did, Arthur, were you waiting to say something about this?
No.
Uh, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Mr. Thayer is not sitting on this one. Reminded of that. Okay. Thirty-eight sixteen, Edmund M. Carpenter, Jr. and Patricia F. Carpenter, seventeen Columbus Avenue, for the applicant.
Attorney Arthur Reed. This involves an existing house in the V.R. Village Residential District and the Village Height Overlay District, which limits the height of buildings to twenty-five feet, and in which the front yard setback is required to be twenty feet. What the applicant proposes to do is to construct an addition which would be at the closest point thirteen point five feet from the lot line, which joins what is called a way on some plans, on the, which is actually a portion of the adjacent lot. There are actually four adjacent ways on this rather bizarre layout that are portions of, of other lots. And if you consider that as being the front yard, we're operating within the front yard setback, but no closer than the existing building. So in that case, we're asking for a special permit. There is another analysis of this, which is that there is another way, an unconstructed way, called Columbus Avenue, which is on the other end of the lot. And under the zoning bylaw, it's provided that you can maintain your front yard setback from any one street or way, if you front on more than one of them, whether or not constructed. Expressly says whether or not constructed.
No, I see the one, I don't see the other.
Is that Columbus Street and Columbus Ave?
Right here.
The way that lot's configured, a seventy-five feet of frontage on Columbus Street.
Let me see what you're looking at.
This Columbus Street, this seventy-five foot of frontage is part of that lot?
Yes.
Okay. That meets the frontage requirement for a buildable lot out there?
Yes. And, and, and any of them...
Right there.
Whether, whether it meets the frontage requirement is not the issue. We're talking about front yard setback, not frontage. And expressly says that you maintain your frontage from any one street. On the basis of that, unless you see any reason otherwise, I think we can maintain our front yard setback from what's shown on the plan as Columbus Street. The other ways are actually somewhat questionable, even though they do provide physical access. They're somewhat questionable as being a way in any event, because they're a portion of a lot that's just labeled as way, rather than being an actual laid-out way, whereas the Columbus Street, as it's called there, is actually a way shown as such on the Land Court Plan. There was also a question that was raised as to the height of the structure, which is limited to twenty-five feet. And we're not, we wouldn't be asking for relief from that requirement in any event, because the addition is actually lower than the existing house. And there would, and although there's a sloping grade, which creates a problem, that grade, we've checked with the surveyor on the project, Jeff Blackwell, and with some minor grading changes, we'll be able to have the elevation above grade, as computed under the bylaw, be no higher than twenty-five feet after the construction would be done. So I guess what I would be looking for, so there'll be no confusion, if you saw your way clear to doing this, would be to indicate that the frontage can be maintained from Columbus Street, and that therefore no relief is required from the front yard setback from the way as shown on the plan.
Why would we even need to indicate that, Arthur? Why couldn't you just do that as a matter of right?
Well, I said, I, it's my position that we can.
The frontage is a hundred feet, though. Minimum frontage is a hundred.
But that doesn't really matter, because it's the front...
There's a lot of record.
It's, it's, yeah, and the setback is, can be maintained even from any street that you, that you abut, whether or not you're using it for frontage.
I got it.
So I think we're all right on it.
Then you would be in compliance because your side yard would be...
Yeah.
Do they? It's not clear to me that, that Columbus Avenue touches this property.
What it is, as I, as I described it, Michael, I wish I had the Land Court Plan with me. There are four lots, four, uh, uh, four pork chop lots that have the, the bone of the pork chop shown as way, as they go back to the buildable part of those lots. And those, that, that corridor of ways is what is being shown here as Columbus Avenue. There is no Columbus Avenue, per se, shown on the Land Court Plan, just these, just these so-called ways.
Arguably, your client doesn't have any right to go over those ways, correct?
Uh, there's nothing on the certificate of title about it one way or the other, except for the fact...
The front has to be off of it.
The Land Court description describes it as being by a way. And that implies the right to use the way.
Or, wow. That, that's a, I mean, I certainly think you could make, I, the argument that Columbus Street is the frontage, I would see no issue with that.
I don't have any issue with the special permit either way.
But why do we even have to grant this special?
Well, yeah.
We don't.
That's what I'm trying to get at here.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I think, I don't think you need to be here.
Uh, I'm, I'm...
Change the front yard zoning setback to the other side and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why, why don't I? I, I think what I would like to do, I was sort of hoping, when I got the full analysis of this thing, which really only came this morning, I was hoping that Marcus would be at the meeting today, and then I might be able to grab him outside the meeting and and then I might be able to, uh, grab him outside the meeting and just get his take on it. Uh, what I would suggest that you do is, uh, continue it until the next meeting so that I can have a chance to talk to Marcus between now and then.
And then you can withdraw it if you.
And then I would withdraw it if he agrees.
Yeah, and it's a way to get there.
Works for me.
If you look at the GIS, the, the, the only way to get to these four lots is those four ways. They're not even ways. They're part of the lots.
They're part of the lot, but the Land Court Plan does show them as, the way is written in on the Land Court Plan on each of those four lots, on those four strips that come down. What can I say? It's all Tristram's landing, you know? What, uh, what happened out there by way of, uh, uh, development is not a paradigm of urban planning.
Sort of like what's happening now.
Yeah. Uh, there are lots of things that aren't paradigms these days.
In many, not just here. You're right. I was talking about just here, but.
You're not kidding.
Anyway, um. So Arthur is interested in, as I think I am, in continuing to the eighth, December eighth.
If he needs to.
Yeah, if he needs it, if you, if you end up.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who want to talk about this?
No.
So.
Pretty thin crowd.
The motion's been made. Is there a second? Michael?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Crowd is thin.
The crowd.
Any reason for that that we know of?
No, we are not.
I don't know. Ed's not as captivating.
I, and I'm not, I'm not meeting, I'm not.
I need to get upstairs.
Okay, I am not cognizant of our electorate.
Maybe she's trying to act like Donald Trump.
I'm going to.
What did he do?
You'd have to just let it fill her.
That's what I needed. Every meeting you'd have to fill it. Just a dollar.
Okay, exactly.
So what happened to the one on, um, the, um, over the setback, twenty-four coffin?
They would extend. Okay, so.
Whatever. Continue it, extend it.
Continue it. Okay, so what are we doing with the other business, Eleanor? Just approving the, that those meeting dates?
They always look great.
Are any of them during school vacation weeks or anything like that that we should be aware of? No?
No.
Um, I will not finish the deadline deadline. I, I won't be here until January fourth.
Yeah, I'm not so sure.
Sorry. So if you want to change that to later, I, I'm out of town.
Okay, so there's three not, not. What's that noise? Is that not fun? There's a couple people who won't be here just January twelfth.
Yeah.
And I was just going to check on, um.
Should we take up the January meeting date, the December meeting?
Sure.
We can do that, right? In case there.
Well, uh, if you have three people that you're certain are not going to be here on January fourth, I prefer to get, make sure the room's cool.
There are three that are waffling at this point.
I'm definitely not here.
The other one is April thirteenth is, um, Holy Thursday or the Thursday before Easter. So I don't know if that's a travel thing for people.
I'm going to be on the island. I'm just not sure if I'm going to be able to come in the end.
On the twelfth of January?
Yeah, I'll know the next, by the next meeting.
Okay. I'm easy, uh.
So we know Lisa's not here, Foxon, I'm Michael, but otherwise.
And Jeff, if he gets a social, if he gets a date.
Who do I, if I get a date?
Not, not a date in the traditional stand.
Sure, we can find your date for the meeting.
We're bringing dates now? It's like Vanderbilt.
That's, I'm going to Donald Trump it. We're going to be, I'm going to start putting people in the crowd.
By December, you should know for sure.
He's not the only one who does that.
All right, so let's just leave it as is and move on.
Okay.
Okay?
Looks good. I make a motion to.
Uh, wait, could you look at your note, please?
Tell. Oh, well, we were just doing the meeting schedule. Then I was going to do my note.
Do I, can, so are we approving the, the meeting schedule?
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with the meeting schedule.
I'll make a motion to.
No, 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 no.
No.
The meeting schedule, do we have to vote that?
You should vote that, yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the meeting schedule as presented.
We have never been super active in this regard. I would go so far as to say inactive. But we certainly can put our input into and/or any, uh, not just info, we can put in articles for, I've changed to the bylaw, is what I'm trying to mumble. If we have any interest, the changes have to be made by four-one, two thousand and seventeen, beyond the, that agenda discussed under other business for December. You mean the changes that are already proposed?
So the reason I asked, it's not noted on the agenda, so it would be best to put this on as an actual agenda, item one, other business for December. And during the interim, you guys can maybe do some thinking and it'll be noted on the agenda and you can have an open discussion about some possible, I know you discussed height a lot over, over time and the various other things that's been mentioned before. You know, the special permits for unintentional setback improvements, et cetera. So there may be some things you could examine that you see a lot that you're uncomfortable getting relief on for various reasons or.
The height and proportion.
Well.
Getting that more solidified maybe.
The thing about grade?
About the, the, what's existing grade.
Yeah.
So nothing would be binding, um, at this point, but if you came in December and had an open discussion and I could go back, or we go back to the authorities that draft warrant articles with something concrete, that could be included in the annual town meeting.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to propose to, uh, rezone my lot. Why not? Spot zoning seems to be accepted.
Can I get that in town?
Yeah, what the heck. Anyway, I digress.
Anything you want.
Yeah.
I agree, though. The grading thing seemed to really get us all, all riled up, or at least me, so.
Three half acre lots.
I could get two, three thousand square foot.
But I think that one, that's been approved as a special permit.
I'm listening.
You think we should do that? Okay.
You guys.
I mean, talk about.
All right, there's one more Eleanor was saying.
I know. I hope I am. I hope somebody looks at it, too, because it's disgusting.
The other one that I would ask that you guys ponder over is the, uh, special permit relief. You had a lot of people come before you for one thirty-nine, sixteen C two, which is unintentional approachment into the setback due to cer, you know, based upon a survey.
No, we haven't had a lot.
Less than, less than five feet, no more than four. So there are a fair number of applications.
Very few people come in and very few surveyors fall on the sword. I've seen it twice, maybe?
No, look at that.
This one, this one is the contractor made a mistake. There's no surveyor involved.
Yes, no, I agree, but I know that, uh, there have been a number of applications that have come before you. Whether or not you deny them, there have been some, there's certainly been some opposition to approving those special permits, but.
But what, 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 what are you suggesting? That we, we don't like approving them as special permits, but we should advocate for a warrant article that makes them okay?
No, 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 no. I'm suggesting that you examine the language in that particular section.
Oh, I hear you. Okay. My bad. I was a little, I was a little worked up.
You needed Snickers.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so those are the only, those are the only three things, grading height and the special.
I think what we should do is the board in December, not now, should appoint one of our, our board members to, uh, bird dog this. And probably one with.
Probably should be you.
One with a law degree, I would say.
Oh, okay.
When are they, when are they going to, when are they, when are they gonna hate that? When are they due, the warrant articles?
April.
No, no, no.
No, due in January.
Oh, I think it's at April first.
No, no, that's the day of the people coming.
Yeah. When does the newspaper cut the, the article for the thing?
Can it be the second of January?
So when, so the powers that be who draft them, when do they need?
They're drafting now.
So they need them by? At the latest. And our meeting is December eighth?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I can, I'll volunteer to go through.
All seriousness, I think you'd be most of all.
What about poor Jimbo over there?
That's right. He's a law, a law degree as well.
I'm not practicing.
He can be your second, second.
Yeah, you can, I can look at stuff and you can be my second set of eyes. How about that?
I like that.
Okay.
He's smarter than I am.
Did you ever practice?
Yeah, ten years.
Here?
No.
You did a little bit here.
Little bit.
Where did you practice?
Charlotte, North Carolina and Boston.
You did real estate law in Boston?
He's smart, he's a smart pants.
All right, let, uh, Terry wants to go home.
I might.
Oh, well, why don't I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I just have one procedural question. Maybe it's just my issue, but on this Quinnet Road project. They submitted photos that had been doctored, which is probably fine, but it's confusing unless they.
You mean, so the, the water wasn't actually up at that height?
Right, and it.
The other one they did was they put the HTC thing on.
But do we, do we make them put that it's been altered? I, I can see people submitting things that just aren't correct.
If I didn't know, I would have been interested to hear that, that, well, the meeting was going.
Well, Jim brought it up in the last meeting.
Let me just be clear, though. We're not talking about any one specific application here.
No, no, we're just in general.
This just came up and I was, I mean, I don't even think it, it would have had a negative impact on this particular one, but going forward, I mean, people can just alter photographs, right?
Absolutely. It's a great idea.
I mean, that was a great picture.
Well, one, they said, the one that showed it higher, they said that had been doctored.
But it wasn't on the photo.
It was not on the photo, but they definitely said it was.
I agree. It should be labeled on the photo.
Yeah, is that something that we do or can do?
Not typically, but the photos are really helpful around this one.
Yeah.
No, no, he, he's talking, he's talking about the one, do you know which photo he's talking about?
I know exactly, but they did say in the, in the first meeting.
It was obviously not, it was, looked like they'd taken a, a CAD file and put it into the picture.
Well, well, I was sitting there looking at it saying, well, what's the problem?
I didn't notice it. Neither did, neither did he.
But they did say in the first meeting that, that it, that was the Photoshop version of what it will look like.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but I get Jim's point. Like, if we get, if we get a packet beforehand and you're reading it and you're looking at it and you, and you, you're like, you know, I mean, because sometimes you see things that are ostentatious or not great or whatever, but that's what's on the ground, so you kind of, you're like, okay, well, this is my starting point and you work around it. So if you're looking at a picture that doesn't say it's doctored and then you're getting into it and you're thinking like that's where you're starting from, I can see where, not, and, not in the particular case that it came up in.
Not that anybody would do this, but you could depict something a lot different.
Absolutely.
Right, and unless we did a site visit, we wouldn't know. So I think, yes, if, I don't know how we would do that, but if.
I could label it.
It's just simple, yeah, or make them label it.
I think as another proceed.
Yeah, if somebody submits a photo that's altered, they need, you know, just, the same as the plan. It says proposed and existing. Like, if it's, it's the same, it should be the same for plans as it is for photos, especially as the technology gets better, but it, it just says marked proposed.
The other thing I would say is, and this has happened before, uh, anytime there's a building permit, anytime there's an application from the past that we're looking at,